Flag bearers ready.
Go live.
Now streaming live on Facebook.
Welcome, everybody, to our Zoom meeting for June 18th Baldwinsville Village Board. We'll start with the pledge of the flag. I'll stand, everybody, if you push yours on mute, you can say it along with me, but that way we only got one voice. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Out there watching, sorry, we were a little late with a little snafu in the system. But we got it, and we're here. Can we start the meeting with a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from June 4th?
Moved. In June 11th?
On June 4th first, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
Exactly.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Get a motion for June 11th special meeting. Approve it.
Take the motion.
Andy second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carried. Alright. Citizens comments, trustees comment. Start with Mark.
I'll stick with the agenda this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth Seko.
I'd like to stick with the agenda, but I'd also like to congratulate all the graduating seniors of this weekend. And that's it.
Andy?
Agenda will work fine, thank you.
Shepherd?
Um, I'd just like to mention that I had a conversation with another board member this week, which in turn had me have a conversation with the chief. And we talked about some of the issues that are being presented to police departments regarding social issues. And I've asked the chief, when it's his turn to speak, to address some of the issues that they face on a daily basis and some of the things that they've done in the, as far as training in the past. He'll elaborate on that when it's his turn to talk. And I appreciate any board member asking questions if you have them at that time. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Bruce, anything?
Me? If it's Bruce, the agenda's fine.
And Meg?
Just the agenda's fine, thank you.
Okay. I have a few comments. We are in phase three, which has allowed restaurants to have some people inside. Also, still requires masks on employees, distancing with inside the building. Some of our businesses continue to use the outside seating to their benefit, and it looks like they're doing what they're supposed to space-wise. I heard of a local business, not in Baldwinsville, that had a big weekend and also got hit with a big fine and the threat of a fine big enough that will put them out of business the next time. So and they're, they feel pretty hamstrung because they don't think they have any way to control the people when they get there. Which is why some of the businesses did not open right away. Some bars and restaurants did not open when you said you could bring people inside because they didn't know how they were going to handle it. You have a 12-foot bar, can only have one person every six feet, but you're gonna have three people at your bar that night. And they didn't know how to handle that. So some people have resisted starting up because of concerns for getting in trouble. And it looks like they're paying attention. The governor said the other day that mayors are responsible for villages. And code officers and police departments on below that. So I've asked Greg to keep in contact with our local businesses and just remind them we're not gonna be there every day, every minute checking on them, but that we anticipate that they will follow the rules. And if not, it might cost them, so. It also has been opened up where people can now visit in hospitals and in group homes. There are some limitations, so if any of you have people in that situation or know people that have relatives in group homes or in the hospital, there's some, the hospitals are being allowed to do it. Not all of them necessarily are going to do it because of the limitations. And then having somebody have to enforce that makes it difficult. We got good news the other day from the state. We finished our, first of all, we finished our paving project. If you remember, we budgeted 220,000. And the bid came in at 232. And our public works committee said that Steve was under the impression that he would bring it in at 220. That was his orders. Well, it came in at the bit, you know, he ended up, it was 219. So it came in $1,000 under what we had budgeted. But the money, we just got a letter the other day from the state saying our CHIPS money, our pave New York money, and our severe winter weather fund money add up enough that we only are having to pay 81,000 instead of 90 that what was going to be our share of the paving this year. So it's good news. The project got done ahead of time and came in cheaper than what we expected. Can't ask for much more than that, plus we got several streets that look great.
Mr. Mayor, I would add that we were able to do more paving this year because of the cost of the asphalt was lower than anticipated. So they were able to do a little bit more, and I think we did a good job this year staying ahead of this in this climate.
Yep. And we wanted to do it early because there is a concern that the state at some point may say, you know, all the money that we have promised out may not be promised. So if you had money like this to get, we'll send in the receipt pretty quick and hope that we get our money from the state pretty quick. That's about it. We did get a nice gift today from Assemblyman Mag, yeah, I was gonna say Megan Reilly. Assemblyman Barclay, who is the head of the minority side of the assembly. He stopped at village hall with hand sanitizer, like looked like four or six gallon jugs and then another box. So chief, if you need stuff, if if the DPW needs some mow, anybody, any of our departments, Ruth, if you need something, there is. Right now, it sits in the front hallway inside the main door going into village hall. That was nice of Assemblyman Barclay to think about us. He was stopping at the library and giving them some, and he had already stopped at Lysander to drop off some there. So it's nice that we don't have to go out and try to figure out where we're gonna find our next batch. And I think that's it. We'll move on to department heads. We'll start out with our attorney, Bob.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I attended a very interesting webinar by Nightcom on restaurant and the issues relative to moving outdoors with the state liquor authority and so forth. And I gave those handouts to Greg. I think you've got those, Greg. Interesting issue that came up was that a lot of the people, a lot of the businesses, restaurants that are doing takeout, people will come in, they'll take out a drink, and they'll take out the food and then go sit on a park bench in the, in a village or town and leave the trash there. So that's, that's an issue. I don't, I don't know that the village of Baldwinsville has seen that, but that's some complaints that people were having. Other than that, I would like to have a, an executive session with the board to discuss some confidential attorney-client matters.
We'll put that on the agenda as item E. Thanks, Bob.
Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay, move on to codes, Greg.
I'll just stick with the agenda this time.
Okay. I did see one of our big lawns got mowed.
Yes.
Happy to see that.
We did mow a couple of lawns this week. And I'm possibly gonna have to mow a couple more this next week.
Alright, very good, thanks, Greg.
Yep.
Village clerk, Moe?
Yes, I didn't get a chance at the work session to ask about door-to-door soliciting. At this point, I haven't, you know, a few people have applied for it, and I just said, you know, not at this time. But I didn't know if, you know, there, if anyone had any thoughts on that. I didn't get a chance to ask Mike earlier.
Comfortable with people coming to their door.
Right.
Right now. I mean, I mean, county, it's every time we run into one of these things, I just send a note to Mark Nikotra, and he checks with Ryan McMahon and whoever and gets back to us. So I will check and see if they've okayed that countywide or if it's up to the individual communities.
Okay. And then the other thing is depending on when we open our building, the court will, are shooting to do, even if the building isn't open. Like July 22nd, they are planning on having, you know, someone see the judge by appointment only. If that's, you know, if they're ready at that point, but that's the goal.
Have some, done some things, and there's some stuff that the court has ordered for the, to put in the meeting room to make it safer. And I know that Mike and I have talked. We probably need to talk with the judge. Maybe we'll have to do one of these kind of meetings with the three of us and see what, what he's being told to do by the state as far as safety procedures and so on. And then we'll have to see how we can help.
Right, signs and, you know, the arrows for the floors, the courts all, they have ordered those, and they have come in. So they're, they're getting ready, but from what I understand, you know, they can get ready, but it's up to the mayor. They were told by.
They, we're in the fifth judicial district, and Judge Murphy, who's the administrative judge, of course, is in Syracuse. And he's been very good in sending out notices. So I'll take a look at those, and anything that comes up, I'll keep you up to date.
Okay. Otherwise, I'll stick to the agenda.
Anna, treasurer.
Um, I will also stick to the agenda. I think most of the things on the agenda pertain to my department, so I will stick to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to senior center, Ruth.
Well, we have been working to try to get the takeout lunch arranged, and there's been some delay through the county, and there is not a definite date for that. But this evening, I did receive email from the project director from the senior nutrition in the county, and she forwarded the mandates and the documents that we have to complete. So we are a step closer, but there still is no date. So that at least is moving forward slowly, but moving forward. And also, Beer House's annual elder abuse concert is being held all online, all virtual. So all the Cantonwood staff are taking advantage of the opportunity to participate in that. And it's been, it's free. So it's been a good opportunity for people to participate in that. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Ruth.
Yep.
Public Works, Steve is not here. His big thing, I know he was very excited that the project got done as quickly as it did. They were a little late getting brushed this week, but I know they came by here today. And just a reminder for people, I don't know if we, if I mentioned it here or if I mentioned it on the live session on Wednesdays, but the park-a-truck program is working again. If you're, if you're cutting down two or three trees and you're gonna have a huge amount of brush, call, you can go through village hall, right, Moe, to sign it up?
Yes.
Yeah, so you go down or call, and they have a forum. And then DPW brings a truck at the end of the day and then picks it up the next day. So you have all evening to throw your brush in the back of the truck. You do it on Friday, you get the whole weekend.
Actually, we have the forum on our homepage.
Okay. So it's on our, it's on our page if anybody wants to sign up. It's a really nice service because if you cut down some trees and rather than lug everything to the curb and have our guys pick up two or three trees all cut up, which is a heck of a job for them, you can get a couple of your neighbors to help you throw them in the back of the truck. And then when they come and drive away, it's all gone. Works very nice, and they weren't doing that for a while, but it is now back. I would say most of the things that we would normally do with the DPW stopped working through the whole thing. So Greg, I know, was around all the time. Moe and her crew, I mean, they split some time, but there was always somebody there. Ruth is, I've never called the senior center without getting Ruth, so I know she's over there a lot. Hats off to everybody who's really done the job. Our citizens did not miss a beat. Alright, was it with Public Works? Police, Michael?
Thank you, ma'am. Obviously, trustee Shepherd indicated, Lee and I had had a conversation. There were some questions about everything that's been going on dealing with police departments across the country and their relationship with the community. And, and Mike started asking some questions about training and policy. And, and I was filling him in, and he kind of stopped me and said, I'd like you to talk about this during your session. So this'll take me a couple of minutes, mayor, but I'd like the opportunity to brief the board as well as all our citizens out there is to, is to what the police department has been doing regarding many of these issues. First and foremost, obviously, going to, going back to the situation that occurred in Minneapolis, that's, that's an inappropriate use of force. I will say that we have a comprehensive use of force policy. It requires officer intervention, meaning that if an officer observes use of force being applied inappropriately, it is their duty to stop that and to intervene and then, and to then notify supervisory staff that that, that incident occurred. So and to back that up, all of our officers have undergone use of force training with the municipal police training council. So not only do we have a strong policy, but our officers have gone through training, dealing with, with use of force, proper use of force in our policy as well. We also have had on the books for many, many years, I hate crime investigation policy. We also have a bias-based policing policy, which obviously indicates that it's not allowable. So those policies are in place in our organization as well. Myself and Lieutenant Lockwood, Mike's our training director, we kind of went back the last 18 months just to take a look at some of the training our officers have been to prior to any of these incidents taking place and garnering national attention. All of our officers have attended anti-bias policing training, every single one of them. All of our officers have attended police, training on community policing and ways to interact with our community and to strengthen those bonds. All of our officers have attended de-escalation training. And for those that are unsure what that is, de-escalation training is, is training and methods as to how to take a situation that might start to head towards where we need to utilize physical force and bring that back to where we only need to talk to those individuals and to use the least amount of force necessary. So the goal there is in that this de-escalation training is to solve a problem before it gets to any type of physical force. There's been a lot of talk recently about officers and police departments having to respond to mental health calls. Mayor, during this entire COVID-19 issue, I've commented on the number of calls many times that we've dealt with domestic violence and mental health calls. I could tell you that there's a training program out called CIT that stands for crisis intervention training, and it deals with, with mental health issues. All of our road patrol officers, with the exception of our school resource officers, have attended that CIT training. It's a week-long school. The national requirement, not really requirement, but recommendation, is that about 20% of your, of your, of your uniformed staff attend that training. I can tell you that all of our uniformed staff that's answering calls has gone to that. And before the coronavirus hit, we had another officer to schedule to attend that week-long school. And the rest of the agency were going to attend the eight-hour mental health first aid training. So everyone was going to have received training. Obviously, once training starts back up, we're gonna get the rest of our people there. And then for the last several years, we've had a member of our command staff, Lieutenant Lockwood, attend a four-day use of force summit that's put on by a well-known legal firm that teaches police practices across the country. And so that way, we can ensure that what we're, what our policy is and what we're teaching and what we're instructing on use of force is timely, current, and appropriate for, for, for law enforcement organizations. So, you know, I think that we have been as proactive as we can be on many of these topics. Again, these are all trainings that I, as I look back, just over the last twelve weeks and months, your members have attended and gone to long before any of these issues have been brought to the forefront on a national level. I think it speaks kind of volumes when we look at, at the number of people that have come in that have dropped off food items or sent letters and cards. I got a card today from someone who said to me, chief, when I was young, I went to Eldon School, you guys did a bike safety program. It kind of let us know that you cared about us. Keep doing what you're doing because, you know, you do make a difference. And we've, we've had a number of those. We posted on our Facebook page yesterday, somebody dropped off a very nice card and, and a large pot of flowers. They look very nice in an American flag pot. They didn't leave their name, they didn't want to, they just wanted, wanted us to know that they appreciated us. So we've had a lot of positive response from our community members buying the officers lunch and a lot of different things. So can we improve? Of course. And we strive every day to improve. I know the governor signed an executive order indicating that each community in New York State that has a police department has to undergo a process by which the operations of that police agency are gonna be evaluated. Part of that process is the district attorney needs to be involved. Received some correspondence yesterday from DA Fitzpatrick. We're gonna start on a countywide basis for that. And then I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, you and I will have some further discussions about what we're gonna do here in Baldwinsville, because the village board will need to adopt something by next April. And we'll certainly have something in place long before then. But I think we've, we've done a pretty good job of trying to be as proactive on some of these key issues that we can be. And as I said, ma'am, we have no, I have no problem. I actually welcome these kind of discussions because I think, and I know that we've been out in front of these things to a great extent. And we'll always listen to constructive comments. And if there's any opportunity for us to improve, we'll evaluate those and certainly implement those things if we can. I'm open to comments or questions from any, any member of the board.
I got a quick one, which is again, something we discussed. But we discussed that, we're pretty fortunate that in our little village that we don't have the use of force happen very often. But when it does, can you just touch on the, the policy that the police department has in place to review the appropriateness of the use of force and how that gets vetted through the department?
Sure. So if the officer does have to use some sort of physical force, they're obviously required to, to complete a police report. They also have to fill out a use of force or subject management report that indicates and lists what force was utilized, why, and under what circumstances. So that officer then submits all that documentation to their immediate supervisor. Their immediate supervisor reviews it. If necessary, they'll consult with an officer that's been trained in defensive tactics or whether the taser was deployed or, or pepper spray, one of those instructors to ensure that, that they followed the policy, that they followed the curriculum and the instructions they've received on the utilization of those tools and techniques. Following that, it then goes to lieutenant. And the lieutenant reviews what the sergeant has reviewed. And then after the lieutenant reviews it, he issues a final recommendation to me. And then I review that as well. So it really goes through a three-stage process at every level of supervision within the organization to ensure that number one, policy was, was followed. Number two, that the force that was applied was appropriate and reasonable under the circumstances. And then number three, was there any additional training that was gonna be required? Or was, did we, did we notice a training deficiency somewhere along those lines in the use of that force? And then number four, do we need to modify our policy in any way, shape, or form based upon that use of force and the applicability of that particular circumstance? So those are the things we look at, and those are the things we evaluate each and every time we utilize force to circle back to trustee Shepherd's initial comment. I think our officers do a pretty good job of de-escalation and, and what we call using the golden tongue and trying to get people to, to comply without resorting to force. And so our use of force incidents, I think, are well below what, what some other agencies might be for, for myriad of reasons. But some of those, I think, are because of the level of training that our officers have and the commitment that they have to, to not utilize force if they don't need to.
Chief, I don't know about the rest of you, but I have a tendency to talk to the television if I get upset with people on TV. And they were talking about, these departments don't understand how to work in the community. And so I yelled at the guy, why don't you come to Baldwinsville and see how we do our community policing? I mean, we, we're the model for it, as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, hats off to you and Dan and every, whoever before, you know, this has been a process, and I think we have a pretty good system. I'm pretty proud of the way we handle situations. I don't sit around and worry that somebody in our police force is gonna do something crazy. I think they've been well-trained. They have backup, they, you know, I, I think we're where we ought to be. Can we get better? I'm sure. I mean, we can all get better at everything we do. And that's what you and I'll be talking about before April 1st. If there's areas where we can fine-tune a few things and put together a package to present to the state and whatever, whoever needs to see that final product. But, but I don't think we have very far to go. I think you're, everything you've told us tonight tells me that we're very close to where three-quarters of the country would like to be, so.
And, and there, we've, you know, myself and lieutenant, and we've already started to kind of compile a list of some things that we think would improve our operations and improve our connectivity to the community. And especially when we talk about building trust and legitimacy, which is one of the pillars from when President Obama had the law enforcement commission, and they came out with six pillars. Building trust and legitimacy is one of those. I've already met with, with our PBA representatives. We have, and have had in our cars for probably 20 years, in-car cameras. I, I think it's, it's appropriate for us to move to a body camera program. I've met with the union leadership, they're on board with that as well. So we'll be presenting a plan to you and the rest of the board with that. I think that will solidify that trust with our community that I think exists already. But oftentimes, if someone calls up to say a decent officer was rude on a traffic stop or this happened or that happened, it's nice for us as a command officer, as a supervisor, one of the sergeants to say, oh geez, I can, I can check the video. All that was on video. Almost in every occurrence, the citizen then kind of backs up their story a little bit because our officers know they're being reported. So I think human nature for, for anyone involved, whether it's the officer or the citizen, if they know they're being reported, people's behavior tends citizen, if they know they're being reported, uh, people's behavior tends, tends to change a little bit. So, uh, I think that would be another step for us to, to continue that, that, that trust and legitimacy in our community and, and for them to know that, that we have body cameras, so if something should occur, and, and, uh, we don't stick our head in the sand, we understand that, uh, police officers are human, just like everyone else out there, mistake can be made, if they're made, we'll deal with them and we'll move forward and identify why it happened and, and try and rectify it, ensure that it doesn't happen again, but I think that would be, uh, a step in the right direction. And we've got some other thoughts as well. Uh, again, again, uh, positive, uh, introspection and, and, and ways to improve, uh, is, is, is always on, on our thoughts, and, uh, just like, uh, the village or any other organization, uh, we don't wanna stay stagnant, so, um, that's where we're at. Uh, we are in the midst of rewriting every single policy in our, in our organization. Uh, that is underway, it has been underway, we're moving forward with that, so, uh, we have a lot of real positive things going on in the organization, and, uh, and, and this is where we're at, this is what we've done, and this is what we're gonna continue to do, to provide the best service we possibly can. And to your point, Mayor, about community policing, our motto, and it has been since the early seventies, is service with understanding, and as long as, uh, the board sees fit to have me continue as the chief, that will be our motto. That will be our goal, is to deliver the best service we can with understanding for our community.
I'm, and, uh, Mike Shepherd will get together, we've, you know, down the road here, whenever it's, you got some stuff you wanna talk about, and we'll, we'll work on, you know, fine-tuning a few of those things.
Great. I look forward to that.
Okay.
And Chief, I'd just like to say, I was the other board member that, that Mike referenced, and I just wanna say, it wasn't that I was questioning at all that, that you weren't doing the appropriate things, I just was, um, unfamiliar with what you had done, and I was wondering if the media attention of late had caused you to reflect on, you know, what you are doing, and it's nice to hear that you have, um, not only been doing all the right things all along, but that you are, you know, looking at, you know, ways that you can do even better, so I appreciate it.
Oh, certainly, and, yeah, and, and, and when, when Mike got ahold of me and said, "Hey, someone called," um, I, I just want everyone to know, I certainly welcome any questions and, and comments, and, uh, and, and I appreciated that call because, quite frankly, if there's someone on the board that maybe feels a little unfamiliar as to exactly what we're doing, uh, and, and I can understand that, 'cause it's not like, uh, we talk about this stuff all the time, you know, the board approves training when people go away, but, uh, I, I think it, it's important for our community to be able to hear, this is what we're doing, and, and I've touched upon that some, uh, a little bit when I've had the, uh, the conversations with Shelley, uh, on Facebook Live, that, that the mayor's done as well, um, and I think we'll, we'll take every opportunity we can in the future, uh, to let people know, this is what your local community police department's doing, and, uh, this is what we're doing to, to try and be as proactive as possible. Uh, I think that, that type of transparency, uh, is, is what people are looking for and, quite frankly, what, what they deserve.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? All right, well, thank you, Michael, appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the regular agenda. Um, new business. Uh, payment, the amount of $20,000 from the sewer fund balance to go to use towards the purchase of a stake rack truck.
Make the motion.
Second. We can't hear you, Dick.
Money that was going to come, be encumbered from last year's budget into this year, and there wasn't enough, uh, in those accounts, so we went to this option, uh, since there's quite a bit of money in the sewer, uh, fund balance anyways, so gave us a good chance to go use that. So that's what that, where that 20,000's coming from for the stake rack truck. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Do, do all of you have the sheets that Anna gave out of what the different budget things that are being moved and stuff?
Yes.
Okay, so you at least have seen them, maybe. Um, item B, can I get a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget encumbrances as per the attached sheet?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Questions? All? Aye?
Aye.
I can't hear him.
Can't hear me at all?
Now we can, you gotta stay close up.
Okay.
We need to buy you a new mic.
Gotta get a new laptop, Andy. You, you can help me find one. Um, item C, can I get a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget transfers as per the attached sheets?
Move. Andy?
Questions? Questions?
I don't think we had a second, I'll second it.
Favor? Aye? All in favor? Aye. Post? Carrie? Item D, I'm getting a motion to transfer $28,038.45 from A1990.4 to A1930.4 pursuant to the Sedgwick litigation revising the tax amounts for the property located at 80 Smokey Hollow Road. The refund is for tax years 2014, 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019.
I'll second it for some discussion.
Okay. This is Smokey Hollow and Oswego Road, and the owner appealed his assessment and won. Has, in theory, overpaid us a certain amount of taxes, and this is paying him back what he's owed. Right, Bob?
Yes, let me, let me point out that the, the village is in an unusual position because, uh, our assessment, um, is done by the town, so as a result, um, we are just sitting, when, when litigation like this begins, we have to sit back and watch what happens. We have no say, so to speak, because we, we, we're not involved in the actual assessment. So whatever the resolution is, uh, both the county and the village are in the same boat. Uh, it's just the school district and the, uh, well, actually, the town, basically, um, and the school district does, just certainly some separate things, but at any rate, uh, there was a resolution of the, of the litigation between the school district, the town, and the, uh, the owner of the property, uh, so that it wasn't a hundred percent of what they wanted, and they resolved it, and, um, it, the, uh, change in assessed value of the property trickled down to the village, and then we're obligated pursuant to the terms of their settlement to, uh, give a refund for the amounts which are based on the, uh, on the changed assessed value. But there wasn't much we could do about it because, again, we're not, we're not involved in the assessment.
Except, as I read the documents last night, it specified that the town was represented, the school district was represented, and it pointed out specifically the village did not participate. It seemed to me it might have been prudent for us to have somebody at the table to represent our interests, um, because it, this doesn't stipulate, but his assessment has been lowered and frozen out through 2022, which seems bizarre to me. But whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, we were not, the village is, is, under the statute, the village is not an actual party to the proceeding.
But the property is in the village.
Oh, yes, no, I understand. Uh, it's just, it's crazy the way that that's, that that's, uh, the, the way that that statute reads.
That's not a very serious, uh, miscalculation for that to have occurred retroactively.
Well, the, um, there were, um, on behalf of the owner of the property, uh, there were, uh, appeals filed each and every year, apparently not in 2015, but in the, uh, in the other years, uh, those were filed, and that's kind of what happens in this, in this type of, of, uh, situation where, um, the assessed value is, uh, protested each and every year, and then litigation is brought, combining them all.
Bob, do you know if part of this is, is because of the sale of part of the, the property over to the fire department?
No, this is, no, this, this is not retroactive relative to the value, this is saying that it was over-assessed to begin with.
He had argued that in a couple of different sessions, we were together talking about other things, and he kept saying, "I want my assessment changed on that mall, it's not worth what they're saying it's worth," and so obviously he followed through, uh, and so we're, this is the amount that we have to pay him back, uh, for five years of over-assessment. So, all right, any other comments? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any other comments before we go to executive session? Can I get a motion to move into executive session?
Move. Easy.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie, see you July 2nd.
Dick, is it just the one executive session that Bob, I think you, you talked, that's the same one you talked about at the work session?
Yes. Same thing.
Okay. I think he's just saying goodbye. Ah.
Signing off. Good luck.
Goodbye.